Good evening. Welcome to the September 15, 2015 Regular School Board Meeting. At this time, we would like, I will call the meeting to order, and I would like the record to show that all board members are present this evening with the exception of Mr. Jerry Lee. It is our pleasure now to have a very special student. It's going to lead us to the pledge, but Ms. Bledsoe, please introduce him.
Thank you, Dr. Frederick. Good evening, school board members, Dr. Jungman. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce you to Christopher Russell, who's a fourth grader from York Elementary School. He was chosen to represent York tonight because he is a wonderful role model for others, and we're fortunate that he's accompanied by his parents, Christie and Tracy, and his brother, Justin, and his principal, Dr. Laura Hopper. So, we thank them for joining us this evening and sharing Christopher with us. Dr. Hopper says that Christopher shows up each day with a positive attitude and is always ready to learn new things. He's a team player and works very well with his peers, but can also be an independent learner. Many students at York look up to Christopher because of his kind personality and positive attitude. So, Christopher, we thank you for being such a good example for all the students at York. Now, I'd like to ask you to stand as Christopher leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Christopher, we'd like you to have this as thank you for coming this evening.
Anyone want to say anything?
Well done, Christopher. I'm sure you're relieved right now, aren't you? Glad it's over? Well done.
We want you and your parents and your brother to know that you are the inspiration for what we do up here, so we want to make sure we provide the very best education possible for you and your classmates. So, thank you for coming.
Now, I'd also like to introduce you to six of our employees who we entrust with the safety of our students every day. These bus drivers have honed their skills, if you guys want to come forward. They've honed their skills behind the wheel so that they can confidently and safely transport our students to and from school each day. This summer, they put those skills to the test at the 44th Annual School Bus Driver Safety Competition, which is sponsored by the Missouri Association for Pupil Transportation. So, let me see if I can introduce them all to you. We have Mark Black in the back, Nancy right here, Mike Mercado is in the black, Dawn Southard, Amy Wells, and is Andy Willhite is here. So, we thank them for coming. The competition included both written and skill tests, which covered all the aspects of operating a school bus. And in the state competition, Mark placed first in the experienced division. Dawn placed second in the rookie division. Nancy placed fifth in the rookie division. And then, as a team, Mark, Amy, and Mike placed third in the competition. Mark's individual performance at the state level qualified him to advance in July to the 45th Annual School Bus Driver International Safety Competition, and at that event, he placed 16th in the national competition. So, additional accolades to Mark. So, I'd like to present them with certificate in honor of their accomplishments. Join me in congratulating them.
We have a couple of questions, and we'll start with Francine.
Is this your first year competing, or have you competed before?
Okay. They were in the rookie division, so it was their first year.
And do you know how many people total participate in the competition? Just roughly?
If I remember right, it was around 70.
Wow.
You have to qualify even to go to the state competitions.
That is excellent. Thanks for keeping our kids safe and then winning, too.
Anyone else?
I'd just say, your driving's wonderful, but also what you do day in, day out in terms of relationship with those children, and the care and concern you have for them is very, very important, too. So, I'd like to thank you for that and your commitment to our young people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to our approval of agenda. At this point in time, the board will move into the business part of our meeting. Not always our favorite, as our first two recognitions this evening, but move on to important business. At this time, we're at 1.04, Approval of Agenda. So, at this time, I need a motion to approve the Tuesday, September 15, Board of Education Regular Session Agenda.
So, move.
Thank you. Annie Bush, you have a second?
Second.
Francine Pratt. And we'll need to vote. I guess I need to go to the meeting. I was there. It's not popping up yet. Thank you. Moving on to public comments to address agenda. At this time, we welcome comments from the public about issues that are on our agenda this evening. Mrs. Salutin, do we have any public comments? We do not? Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to Approval of Minutes. At this time, the board will approve minutes, consent agenda financial and consent agenda personal. We do that in one action. So, at this time, and the board's had an opportunity to look at these minutes from our study session till this evening. So, at this time, do I have a motion that we, a motion that we approve our consent agenda items?
So, move.
Thank you. Tim Rosenberry, a motion, I need a second?
Second.
Second. Jill Patterson, thank you. We'll vote. Okay, we'll move on to 6.01, Our Treasurer's Report. This time, we have Ms. Embry will provide some interesting information for us.
Good evening. We have, again, provided for you our routine documents that are available each month as part of the Treasurer's Report, including the surplus property, that would be individual equipment items and supply items that are no longer in use in the system, as well as the bond financial reports, and the accounts payable check register and the investment report. Once again, this month, we're providing you with the general budget summary document, and next month, in October, we will provide you additional information regarding the realignment of the budget to represent the work that has been done since July 1. That is a brief but conclusive commentary.
Any comments, questions at this time, discussion?
I'm just assuming everything's routine.
Very routine. Yes, very routine.
Okay, thank you. So, do I hear a motion that the board approves the September 15 Treasurer's Report as presented?
So, move.
Thank you. Tim Rosenberry, you have a second?
Second.
Bruce Miller. So, at this time, we will vote. Moving on to information and reports. At this time, we will hear from Foundation for Springfield Public Schools, an update. And Natalie Murdock, the Executive Director of the Foundation, will share information for us.
Thanks so much for having me. It was lovely to see the big check greet us as we came in the building tonight. So, that is one of the big things I wanted to update you folks on, is our back-to-school program, which we were excited to have underway last week. We had what we refer to as Grant Day, which is the best day of our year when we get to provide support to classrooms across the district. It really was a great day for us. These grants provide support to teachers and to principals for a variety of items, for field trips, for classroom projects, for updated equipment, supplies for their library, so really, a variety of needs that they have. And we were excited to award over 85 grants totaling $232,115. So, it was a great day. And really, that program is because of donors, the individuals and businesses in this community that make that possible, so we're eternally grateful to them. And if you're interested in seeing the complete list of projects that were funded, that is on our website, which is supportsp.org, so you can see all of the excited teachers that got to receive that funding. And just a couple of other things. Last month, we hosted our annual donor appreciation luncheon. Some of you were able to attend, and that is an event that allows us to thank the donors that made the past year possible. And last year, we put over $1 million back into the district because of their support. So, it was a good year for us, and we're already kicking this year off with a good start with back-to-school. And we were excited to welcome five new board members to our Board of Directors. Peter Lay with Edward Jones, Paul Satterwhite with Spencer Fain, Britt and Brown, Teresa Coyne with Cox Health, Noah Aldrich with Big Time Results, and Brooke Smith with Harmison and Pyramid. So, we're excited to have them on board. And I'm excited to have a guest with me tonight, our new board president, Mr. Dwayne Falk, who is with Lathrop Engage. So, I appreciate him coming. We are excited for his leadership this next year. Have a lot of fun, fun things ahead. We also have recently established a couple of new funds that will start helping students this year. The Parkview Jolly Green Giant Fund, which will provide opportunities for Parkview staff to receive support for their classroom in their building. So, the Jolly Green Giants got together and put that together, and they're very excited about it. And the William Thomas Pearson Debate Scholarship for Central, which was established in memory of Will Pearson, who was a student at Central and part of the debate team. So, we're honored to be able to provide that service to Central students as well. And lastly, I would just invite you all to attend our October 3 Sip and Shop Brunch and Fashion Show, which raised over $20,000 for the foundation last year. We partner with 417 Magazine to kick off Boutique Week. We have 13 boutiques participating, and this year, each boutique will have an SPS teacher or principal as a model. So, we're even more excited about that, and there's more information about that event on our website as well. And I just want to thank the board for your support of the foundation, and it really is our honor to provide resources to such a wonderful district, and I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Just one comment is that we'd love to be at the Sip and Shop, but that's our Missouri School Board Association Conference. So, one of, one of these years, hopefully, we can have that scheduled a different weekend because I think that's worked out that way. But I know it's a great event, and
Yeah, we'll have fun for you.
Love to be there. Can you, can you share just one of the stories of awarding the grants? I've had an opportunity to do that in the past, and it's just an amazing time for teachers. Perhaps there was one that was especially awesome this year that you want to tell us about?
Yeah, it really is a great day. The kind of the way it works is we keep this very secretive until the day that we show up in their classroom with a check. So, they're very off-guard, and it can get very emotional, and the students get excited. So, there's always, one of the schools that we regularly support is Delaware, and it is very special because we provide a grant that will allow their students, their special needs students, to go on some field trips that they would not otherwise be able to go on. And so, the teachers are always very excited, and they shared with us this year that these kids would not be going to a Cardinals game. They would not be going to the golf course to play golf because their parents just wouldn't be able to provide that. And these kids get that opportunity because of this project and this program. So, it's very special to see the kids very excited and the teachers overwhelmed, and it's really, that's what it's all about. So, we're, we're thankful to do that.
Right. Thank you. Anyone have any other comments or questions? Thanks for coming very much. We appreciate you bringing your special guest with you tonight, too. Okay, we'll move on to another very important information report, 7.02 ACT Data Update.
Looking without pain.
Uh-oh.
Okay, so I got a story about Grant Day. I was visiting Sequoia Elementary School that morning, and the principal and I were walking through classrooms, and she, and she got called over the intercom, and she said, "They never call me over the intercom." So, we run to the office, you know, because she knows it's Grant Day. So, she gets there, and she gets her grant, they take their picture, and she directs the secretary, "Start the purchase orders now." I mean, it was a great moment for the leader, so I loved it. I'm here to share tonight with you a little bit about ACT and the results that have come in and answer any questions you might have along the way. Tonight, I'm going to really show with, share with you two cohorts worth of data. We have 2015, which are seniors who graduated, who have the opportunity to voluntarily take this test through their own means. They take it many times before they graduate, and then their best score is posted in that 2015 cohort data. We also have cohort data for 2016, which was the very first time with DESI's Assessment Plan change, where all juniors in the state of Missouri took that exam. So, we have those two pieces of data to show with you tonight. This is an important, this is kind of the overview, big, big picture, and I kind of want to just direct your attention right here because I think this is the first piece of data I want to show you. Our 2015 students, 66% of them voluntarily took this exam compared to the state's 77% of kids. But you can see through the scoring, our composite, and then all of the subtests that go along, we outperformed all of the state when you look at all of SPS kids. And that's a great accomplishment, and we need to thank our teachers who are preparing our kids for college and career readiness type of exam. When you look at the 2016 cohort, you'll see the asterisk here, but that means we had about 98% of our kids participate compared to the state, which is probably close to 98%. We, again, you think when we add more kids who were never going to take this exam into the mix, the averages are going to go down a little bit. And you see, you see averages go from a composite of 22.5 to 20.4, but the gap, we increased the gap on the state on all of those subtests. So, that was something I don't think we could have predicted along this way. I think it does go back and talk about the rigor and the relevance of this exam, and it also talks about great preparation in the classroom. So, I just share that big picture with you. We increased the percentage, but we also increased the gap against the state. This is a breakdown back to the school level, so you'll see that many of our schools are outperforming state performance, state average. We do have a gap at Hillcrest and Parkview, Parkview being right along the mean in most areas, with Hillcrest being a little bit under. So, I think that's a good place for us to see where the work might need to be focused if we're going to continue to increase this, this exam. This next part is, remember 2015, so these kids have had multiple chances, and now in 2015, we have all the data. So, we have, we can see how we did against SPS, the state, and national on the composite scores and all of the readiness piece of it. So, you can see SPS being in the blue and the state being in green and purple being the national, and SPS is outperforming all those comparative groups at this point for our graduating seniors who just left the system. Something to be very proud of. I'm trying, John. I think this is a great piece of data to look at, too, and this really, you'll see at the bottom how this is organized. This is really by race, ethnicity, and you'll see it by 2015 on this bottom piece for the state and for the district and for the state. And then, again, how we did for 2015 for, against the district and the state. We are outperforming again in almost every single cohort, except for perhaps the state and with our black students in 2015 just being 1/10 of a percent point underneath. Now, I look, I do celebrate this at the same time because we've increased the number of students who've taken this exam, and we increased the gap over our state cohorts. So, I think that's a good piece of data. We talk a lot about how is this breaking down into lots of different groups. We don't have free and reduced lunch cohort data to share with you because ACT doesn't track it in that particular way.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
And I understand you don't have it by free and reduced lunch. What would be helpful, and I know it's something you all would have to do, but within this particular group of being able to break it down by the high schools, by the ethnicity, because with the work that we're doing with the Lumina Grant, we would have possibly resources that we can direct towards that priority population, which impacts the overall population. And so, I think that would be helpful.
We can do that.
Okay.
So, I will see if we can get that to you.
That would be great. And if you could get it to Marty, who's in the steering committee.
In the back row to make that happen for us. We'll make that happen.
That would be great.
We do have that data.
Allows us to be more targeted.
Yeah.
I threw this in here because I thought it was interesting, but this is really the distribution of composite scores from 2015 to 2016. I love to see that we have lots of 2015, we have lots of these purple way up on the high side, but we also have a lot of pink on the low side. And so, when you add a lot more kids into the system, too, the distribution changed. So, if your distribution, if you remember, ACT was from, it's from really about our lowest score is about a 14 to a 36 being a perfect score on the ACT. So, this was an interesting kind of look of how that is distributed through our system. This is interesting, too, because the fact that in 2015, most kids, when you take it as a voluntary test, it really comes in two kind of modes. It comes in the ACT that you probably took at one time, and now we have ACT plus writing. So, there's a whole writing component to it. Most kids in 2015, most colleges don't require the writing component. So, 2015 scores are going to be typically without the writing. You can see, we only have 214 students have actually took this writing section as a voluntary piece. DESI, when the new Assessment Plan required all juniors to take the writing piece. I really am excited to see this growth over the composite of our state by almost a point from our seniors across, from across the state. I think this is really the, one of the big celebrations of this data is we've added more writing across the curriculum, and I think you're seeing it pay off in this particular place. And I think that's a really great celebration for Marty and her team and the curriculum That's an interesting piece, too, because this comes with the ACT data. You can see the range of scores, so a kid who was in a 2023, teachers would use this to then identify many lessons that would be taught to actually increase their scoring on the writing portion of the exam. So, one of the strengths here, I love that we are now testing every kid. We're giving every opportunity for kids to be career and college ready and take this exam free of charge. So, that's a huge undertaking. Again, I have to go back and celebrate Jill and her team, who make all of that happen for every, every junior in the state takes it on the exact same day. Huge, high-security, lots of logistics to pull that off. It's currently paper pencil, but I know there's talk about moving it into more of a digital age also. So, that's a huge celebration. Writing across the curriculum being a great celebration for us. I also think one of the strengths here is that this test really becomes relevant for kids. This is now determining my placement where I'm going to go to college. It's going to have influence on scholarship. I think motivation is a lot higher in this space than we see in other exams for kids. So, I think that's why you see performance also being better than some other exams we look at. I was also curious to see that this mirrored, some of these results mirrored our English II EOC exam, where we were performing pretty well, again, our junior kids taking that test. What we need to still do with this data, we're still waiting for the full 2016 report to come in, so we'll have some more data to analyze, but we will also look at it with peer groups. We will look at it to see how it reflects courses. So, if a student has taken two courses in this sequence, what were their, what was their test? If they, versus kids who have taken the full core sequence of courses. So, we want to do analysis on the course participation and scores. And then, you can see that we are gearing up. This test will be statewide again on April 19. So, this test is also open to our homeschool kids. So, we had, how many kids, Jill? 19 students from in the community who say, "Yeah, I want to participate because it's offered by the state." So, we also, they're not included into our composite score, but we do offer it out. Thought that was a good service from the state and Jill's team to make that happen. Questions, thoughts that I can help clarify?
So, with the free and reduce, with all of the juniors required to take the test now, will they still give the two free opportunities to students who are on free and reduced lunch to take the ACT? Do I, do I have that right? I know in working with the Jury Scholars Program before, there were students who were entitled to take the ACT at least twice in a year and get a waiver for the cost of that. Will they still do that if they're requiring everyone to take it in the 11th grade?
Actually, that's new information for me, so I don't, I don't know about a waiver. I know they have sometimes a financial hardship waiver, but I don't know about free.
A follow-up. Honestly, don't have that off the top of our head.
I don't have that one.
And I know there was some confusion.
District provided, or if that's a community resource pool grant that we tap into. So, let us do some investigation.
Let me look. I don't know. That's the first I've heard of that.
Okay, thank you.
We do know a lot of kids obviously will continue to take it over and over again. This is probably the first time for a lot of students. The question is, how are they going to resource that potentially?
Right, and that had been a good resource when the community was helping students prepare because we would let them know they had that opportunity. And I know with all the changes with DESI, we weren't sure where that fell within the process, and that will also help us regarding Lumina, because if we can shift some resources to make sure those students still have that opportunity.
That'd be great. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to clarify, are they all given the opportunity to take it, or are they all required to take it as a junior?
That is a great question, and was asked by many school people to DESI, and it was a required to take the exam unless it was part of their special services IEP.
Okay.
So, that piece could have come into picture there, so but there was no punishment, there was no, you know.
Toothless tiger, but it's an incentive to.
Exactly. So, we'll see how this plays out. We are funded for April 19. We don't know what the future of the DESI plan and assessment continue to hold out. No, we don't. But it's a great opportunity for the juniors who would never have taken this opportunity, this exam, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
One quick question. I, I know that in the past, it was a concern that when students, all students required were, would be required if that came about, which it has now, seems like junior year, that we would see a tremendous drop in ACT composite scores because you would have students taking a test that really didn't want to take a test and didn't have plans to do anything with the test, and that we would potentially see a drop. I'm not seeing that drop here.
Again, I go back to this. When we increased the number of participants and then we increased the gap against our peers across the state, I could have never predicted that. I would have said increasing the number of participation was going to drop, and, but we did not do that here, so.
There's a net composite drop, but as compared, when we added 34% to the pool and the state added 23% to the pool, our performance actually improved over that, which is really a positive thing for students that weren't engaged in this assessment, maybe being exposed to it and saying, "Hey, I can go to college. I can. There's a door open for me. There's a scholarship waiting." So, that's the benefit of getting everybody at the table, I think, so.
And that was going to be kind of leading into my next question, is the, is the personal piece of this, which we're all about engaging and relevant and personal, is what this looks like to a student that had not planned to take this college placement test, takes it, does very well, and what that feels like for that student in terms of, "Oh, I could do this." I mean, those are the stories that would be great to hear.
That'd be great.
Once this information, I mean, I guess that the students have been notified of their score.
Yes, results were distributed last spring.
That would be great to know if some of those conversations are happening in classrooms and with counselors.
I'm sure they're happening with our guidance counselors. I'd love to bring you a story of a student like that.
Yeah.
I'll look. That's great.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything?
Just for knowledge, this will be embedded in the APR. That will be coming out. I think we'll actually get full release and be able to share with the board probably in November. Study session ballpark right now is what we're thinking. We knew, we used to get that in August, early September due to all the assessment changes, state work. It's being delayed, but this will be embedded into some of the scoring for our college and career readiness as part of that APR.
As a counselor that used to do this, I, you know, I, I think
As a counselor that used to do this, I, you know, I think there's some students who still think if I take it five times, my score will automatically go up.
Didn't work for me.
And unless, I mean, just understanding this type of test and rigor, sometimes the second time you do a little better. Unless they did something, unless they took some other courses, unless they did something substantial in these areas, it wasn't just going to go from an 18 to a 32, just because you took it five times. And there, I think the value here is that 11th graders are taking it, and they still have a full year and a summertime and a year to really do something, take some additional coursework, really do some things so their score can go up. If you wait till April of your senior year, that pretty well is going to be your score. And that's going to be your preparation. So to me, the value here is that counselors now have every junior with a score. I know some probably would have already taken it, but they could then look at that and be able to say, here's a reason maybe you want to take a rigorous senior year instead of a year off and before you go to college. So I just think there are all kinds of good things that could happen because of the requirement of students to take it. And I hope that's what we do. We just tell them, you've got to take it for your benefit. And then I think it'll give us some things that we can do. And I think then we'll see the scores of those who opt to take it additional times even be better.
Well, and also with the work that we're doing with Lumina, with a huge focus on those who may be on free and reduced lunch, so that they have the additional resources, there's going to be more pointed work of prep. And that's one of the big areas that Marty's helping us work on, of putting more resources into that prep side, even as far as even transportation, if needed, on Saturdays or whenever they do that. So I think helping from the community side with that, it's really going to help.
We know there are gaps that we need to close. So this helps drive decisions and resources, and we want every student to continue to excel. It's great information for every student their junior year, but opportunities for improvement, but things to celebrate. And again, we take this as one metric, right? This is significant, but insufficient in the full measure of our system. So we will continue to work up the full set of metrics, so. It's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 8.01, Board Policy Adoptions Revision. If you recall, all the policies before this evening were brought to us at the September 1 study session for review. So if you have questions, I know we've had time to ask questions and have more discussion about some of the policies. But if you have any last question or comment for Ms. Embry, she's there ready and waiting.
As a reminder, this represents the final leg, and therefore celebration, of bringing forward the Missouri School Board Association policies. Many of our policies already aligned with those of the Missouri School Boards Association. They're just organized in a different way or labeled differently. And oftentimes, some of the things that we did have in our policies were more procedural in nature. So these keep us aligned with statute, and that's a good thing.
So are you going to celebrate now or after we vote?
We can do both. We can do both. There's an entire team ready to celebrate. I'm the, I'm the final person at the podium.
Bruce really is.
And Bruce, oh, let's not forget Bruce. Yes, he weathered the storm with us. It wasn't really a storm, but it was a tedious process.
Yeah, it was more like a barge trip.
Yeah.
A barge and a tow.
There's a cruise, I don't want to be on that.
So at this time, do you have a motion that the board approves policies BBB, BCH, DFA, DJF, and Section F?
So move.
Thank you. First runner, we have a motion. And second by Annie Bush.
And that's also eliminating the prior F, right?
It's in the action.
I'm sorry.
We might ought to say that one.
Do you want me to say that?
As presented.
It does delete the current F.
Yes, wanted to make sure you understand that.
And replaces them with the full new section.
Riveting, Bruce, riveting.
Thank you.
Okay, please vote.
I can do it again.
Good. Voting is complete. Thank you. We're moving on to 9.01, New Business. And we have no new business this evening, so we'll move on to 10, Unfinished Business. And at this time, we have recommendation that the board approve the Local Model Appliance Plan for Special Education as presented. If you recall, our Director of Special Services, Phyllis Wolfram, presented this information with us on September 1st. A copy of the proposed plan was attached to our board docs. This time, if there's anything, any other questions or comments, we'll move forward with a motion that the board approved the Local Model Compliance Plan for Special Ed, as presented by Phyllis Wolfram, Director of Special Services.
So moved.
Thank you. Jill Patterson is second, or a motion and second by Francine Pratt. Moving on. 10.02, Declaration of Surplus Property. We'll ask Ms. Embry to come forward, although we did have some, or had a presentation regarding this at our September 1 study session. But at this time, we will have opportunity for discussion and vote. I would encourage, before we get started here, I would encourage the board to ask additional questions or share information you may have collected the last two weeks and/or make comments regarding your thoughts on this issue. But Ms. Embry, go ahead and share with us what you have.
Just like to highlight that the information that is posted on board docs is the same information that was posted for the September 1 meeting. I did add a couple of lines, and that includes the street address. Had not had that on there before. Also, the appraisal date and the appraised value that has since been shared. Also, would like to note that we've posted this online for everyone's awareness, but to review that a request for information process is being developed with regard to these properties. And there are five different components of that request for information process. And I'd like to read those for your benefit. The first would be, what would the property use be? So anyone that would be responding with this request for information would provide the intended use of the property, the plans for improvement or construction on the property, as well as information about the actual respondent or respondents, if it's multiple people, the purchase price and closing date requested, and lastly, the financing feasibility of the proposed use. So those would be all part of the criteria by which we would evaluate any options for surpassing the property.
Okay. Thank you. I know this is something that each of us have been thinking about, and we have heard from community members in regards to what we might do this evening. So this time, I would like to open it for discussion. Does anyone have anything they would like to comment, questions, talk about?
I think there's a clarification. I want to, before we vote, just so that I understand. I understand that we're voting for this to go into surplus property. And then on that, and then I understand that we have a Realtor that we're going to use. On that criteria that's going to be submitted regarding how the property is going to be used and what plans for improvement and information about the respondent and purchase price, will the board as a whole make a determination based on that? Or is that left in the Realtor's hand?
Any proposals would be provided to the Board of Education for consideration. This would definitely, this is certainly the first step, to be able to list the properties with a Realtor and embark on this request for information process. So that it would come back.
And we would submit to you for review.
And those would be considered, as would any type of negotiation with real estate. That's how that would be handled.
Then my next question related to that, because I have had several conversations with different people in the community and different businesses. When that criteria is put together, do we, and this is, I don't know, do we allow anyone from the public to look at what that criteria is that we're going to use? So that if there's, it's almost like another set of eyes looking at the criteria to say, well, would you consider this, or would you consider that? Or is that just left up to the board, since we've been elected by the community to, it's like the community's trusting in us that we're going to look at their concerns when we're looking at that criteria?
Francine, are you asking whether they can have input into what the criteria would be, or whether they can have access to what the criteria is?
Input to what that criteria would be? And so my question is, is the expectation that as elected board members, that we will be the eyes and ears when we create that criteria? Or is that something that is presented for public comment to come in? I don't know how.
Yeah, I think our process has been to look at best practice around this of how you deal with a property that may have another community use, may have a purchase price. We'll build a rubric, or not necessarily a scoring guide, but a list of criteria. And if the board has input, if these five fit with your ideas, if there are things that you want us to add to the table of criteria, then we will build that out and give that to the Realtor, who would then publish that as part of their process, and seeking request from any person or group that might want to put in a proposal. And then they would submit those proposals to us, and we would submit to the board. And so you would review them, review the criteria, review the proposals, and you would determine if there is a party that you want to enter negotiations with.
So to make sure I understood you.
The public would not be really telling us what criteria to use. That would be kind of us discussing it together.
Okay, so the administration would create it. And then as the board, we can either add to it or make suggestions.
So the five things that we've listed are the, are kind of thoughts at this point. If you have things to add to that, this would be a good time to give us feedback as we begin to build up that criteria list.
Except to be clear, that's not tonight's issue.
Right.
Tonight's issue is just whether we're going to do this as surplus property.
Exactly, but that's why I want to know what I'm voting on.
So then the administration will get to work. You got it.
Okay.
So then we will get to work on building that full RFI proposal to get to the Realtors.
So once the administration builds, builds that criteria, would that be something that's going to be discussed in one of our study sessions?
It's up to the board. I mean, it's your guys' discussion. If you want us to bring it back for approval, or if you want to give us feedback and let us build it and put it back out, and then you can look at the proposals. That's completely the board's discretion.
All right. Thank you.
I'm just stating that I will recuse myself, because one of the proposals I have been deeply involved in. So I will not be voting tonight.
Okay. Anyone have anything? Mr. Rosenberg?
Yeah, I will be voting on this tonight, and I will be voting for it. And I think it's a fairly easy vote to, because the question is a simple one now. The complexity will come when we start receiving proposals. And I hope that we receive a bunch of them. Because I think both facilities, while they may be past their useful life for schools the way school is done now, I think the, I, as a board member, have a real interest in making sure that these facilities, which were built by the community, have some sort of community purpose to them. Even if that, even if that purpose ends up being somewhat commercial, that it would still enhance those communities. And I will be opposed to any proposals that simply come in and propose to demolish or clear those sites and try to simply gain some sort of commercial advantage, and we get very little in return for that, the district or the community. I think ultimately, our responsibility as board members is to, is to answer the question, what is in the best interest of the school district? And I think simply because of the focus that we have as seven community members, focused on what, you know, we ask ourselves that question every day. What's in the best interest of the district, of the districts, the people in the districts, the students? I think that the criteria for selection ought to come out of that. Because that, and, and that's not to say that what's good for the district is going to be good for the community. But generally speaking, most of the time, that's going to be so, I think. So I have confidence in our ability to move this thing forward. I am just hopeful that we get a lot of creative proposals, because I think both Bailey and Pepperdine Buildings and Sites are excellent real estate resources and excellent candidates for reuse for a number of different purposes. So I'll be voting for this and can't wait to do it.
Anyone else have anything? I'll just, I guess I'll conclude by, just as a person that's lived in this community all my life, and I wanted to, I've been in both buildings numerous times, but I wanted to take one last look. So yesterday, I had the opportunity, it was so kind of Ms. Embry and Mr. Went, took me on a walking tour through both buildings.
Field trip.
It was a fun field trip. And the thing that I, I guess, that I thought about as I walked through the buildings in their day, they're grand buildings. They're, they're, they're both wonderful buildings. The brickwork, the interior, I mean, they're built to last. And the thing is, I ask myself, but are they what we need for educating children in the 21st century? And we could pull, I guess, at a minimum 400, or no, I'm sorry, $4 million from our budget to try to just bring them up to code. However, we wanted to bring them up to their, their grandeur of the, of the old time. I think those are very low estimates, because some of the buildings, I mean, you know, they would just need some additional things done that I, that I think on our list, you just put, "to be determined."
Right. We, until you get into the work, you don't understand the scope of it.
And so some of the things like the restrooms, the roofing, the tuck pointing, the outside of the building, some of those things that could be even more, even more expensive. But anyway, so I'm saying all that to say, when you think about both sites, we have not had students in either building for three years, maybe.
Since June 2013.
And then you think we do have some other buildings that if we had the additional $4 million or more, that those buildings need the restoration, and they need the work, because they're currently serving students and families and teachers every day. So I think as, you know, we, I have had at least one member of the community mention that the school district should consider them historic buildings and fix them up and put something in them. And I understand that, but we don't have that something right now to put there. We don't have a need. If we did, educators are great at recycling and restoring and reusing. So we would have something going on in those buildings if we, if we truly needed them. But we have buildings that are in need of that kind of money. So I guess what I'm saying, same thing with Mr. Rosenberg, is I'm going to be voting yes that we surplus these buildings. And that does not mean that we've given up on them and that we are just going to put them on the market. We are all very interested in that they do something, that something happens. Someone has a vision and some money and some time that can put into those buildings and do something great with them, and that's what we'll be looking for. So that's kind of my $4 million statement there. All right. Plus. Well, okay, it looks like at this time that we're ready for motions. So do I hear a motion that the board approves of recommendations to declare the Bailey and Pepperdine properties as surplus and directs the sale and transfer or lease the properties identified? Is that what we're doing tonight? Okay. So do you have a motion?
So move.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. And we would even have a third, I think, here.
Yeah, I'd be in by like a half a second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tim Rosenberg and we have a second by Jill Patterson and at this time we'll vote.
Give it a second.
Yeah. We're so excited to vote that it's a little slow here.
All right, then we'll wait. The time.
It's strange.
There it is.
You succeeded.
Okay. Passes and we'll be moving on. Thank you again for all the work that administration put into this and all the questions that you answered for us and the time that you took to help us as we spent a lot of time in our process toward making this decision. So thank you, thank you. Okay, moving on to public comments. This is an opportunity that the board allows comments on topics not related to the printed agenda. Mrs. Luden, do we have comments? None at this time, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to 12.01 Superintendent's Report.
Just a couple of brief items, just for your knowledge of internal working. So auditors are onsite doing field work. Reports will be coming in the next couple of months, but they're onsite through part of next week, so we're working with them. We do have a community leadership visit coming up next week and Mr. Rosenberg will represent the board and a few administrators will be participating with the Chamber of Commerce on the community leadership visit and we look forward to sharing the learning from that. Also, site visits are going in a rapid way. You are probably aware that the cabinet tries to engage on a regular basis on trying to be out in sites. This year, we're making sure that every site is visited at least once a quarter. Actually, Mr. Renner and I hit a couple of sites this morning, had a great visit and always impressed by the work that our teachers are doing in the classroom. Exciting to, to see the students. Additional things, just as, just awareness, EdCamp is being hosted by Springfield on Saturday. So Saturday morning at Cherokee, 400-plus educators from across the region are registered to show up and give their Saturday morning for what is called an EdCamp experience. There's been multiple of those that have happened in this region, first time we've been able to host it. But it's really an unconference, right? So it's not a pre-registered course by course, this is what's going to be offered. The educators show up, they say, this is what I'm interested in learning about, and it is built at that time and what I'm willing to present by the educator. So it's just self-run, really an organic process and exciting. So if you're out and about Saturday morning and you want to see some teachers learning together in a neat environment, Cherokee is open for business, so pop in. Additional items, I think Sherwood Rip and Cutting was a great success. Thanks for all that showed up. Great community appearance even through the rain. So we had a great, great showing and a great showing for the Boys and Girls Club and the partnership that exists there. Last thing, I'll just go straight to legislative update. Next month, I will bring you our legislative platform from last year so that we can begin the work of building up the platform for this year. Session will be beginning before we know it. As you know, like I mentioned before, House Bill 42 is the only big item that's left to be determined for veto session. Does not appear, we will come up for a vote, but we'll keep you informed if anything happens. So that's the legislative piece also.
Thank you. Moving on to Board of Education discussion and Board comments at this time. Does anyone on the board have anything you'd like to share in terms of school visits or meeting attendance or anything? Yes, Tim?
On the heels of legislative update, I attended last Friday morning a meeting at the chamber that was attended by representatives from Senator Dixon's office and Representative, Representative Burleson's office, as well as Representative Huff came to the meeting. And it was a community coalition to discuss strategies and then upcoming legislative session for putting on the floor and passing, enabling legislation for local funding of early childhood education. We went, last year, some of us went up to Jeff City and testified to committees on both sides of the Capitol. And we almost got it to the, to the floor, but it just didn't quite make it. The strategy this year is going to be similar. Fortunately, nobody during the meeting said, this is a marathon, not a sprint, but that's what, I think that said, they said that in the email and this is definitely one of those. And Representative Huff had some pretty ingenious ways of building coalitions, not just within our community, but in the state for different communities that are looking for enabling legislation for all kinds of different things and looking at ways in which we could collaborate and get that on a bill. So there's movement on that and if the board wishes, I'll continue to pursue that.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Yes, Bruce, did you?
Just to elaborate, just a little bit about our visit this morning to Glendale and Cowden, that we were able to look at the building, but mainly we talked with some teachers at Glendale that are involved with the Quest program. Their students were out into other classes for first block and that was just really exciting, all the way from teachers that are working with Quest. I think there was a brand new teacher there and then one that I'd actually taught with, so that tells you how old he is. He's still there teaching, but he was very young when I was older. But it was their excitement about their program and what it is doing for students beyond raising their ACT score. They think that probably will happen, but they didn't even mention ACT score or a test score. They talked about some other things that were great and how, I think we're going to hear at some point from some of those students, how they presented to the Carver faculty and the, the faculty people from Glendale were held up in traffic. The students were already there, so they just started the program. By the time they got there, the students were doing the program and so they just stood back and let them take the whole thing. It was just a, you know, what you want to hear about the things, but I, I just can't tell you how positive they are about what this is doing for their students. And then to go to Cowden where they're, of course, one of our Ignite schools, but again, I don't think, I mean, they're, they are excited about that, but they're, just the change in the culture of what's happening. We visited the, I think it was fifth grade, fourth, fifth grade team. Their students were out in special classes and so, again, from a brand new teacher to some with 15 to 20 years' experience, but we're in there. And again, about the changes and how everybody's on board and they spent summertime working together on their own, volunteered, came up, bonded, did things that, and how that change is now occurring at that level. And used to, we would write lesson plans for the week at least, maybe even for the month. And now how they try to do it the night before for the next day, but oftentimes by nine o'clock, that has to change. So they're, how they're, how that has driven, I mean, those teachers were excited about that change, not upset about the change. They were excited about the things that were happening in their school. And, and so to me, the excitement at, from kindergarten, I guess, through high school that I saw in two buildings from the teachers, we're about change and we're making change, but there was no resistance from any of those that we talked to today. They were basically, you're going to have to get out of the way. And I think one of the teachers at Quest, if it really works well, he said toward the end of projects, you almost have to inject yourself in there because they're doing things and finishing and we're just walking around the outside. So it's a whole huge change.
A lot of things we heard was students taking ownership, taking responsibility, teachers at Cowden talking about how they knew more information about their students now because of the real-time data that they're being able to provide and that kids are being able to move at faster rates, further faster because of the personalized environment. So, so much appreciate, these were impromptu conversations. We just walked into collaboration rooms and absolutely couldn't be more impressed by the educators that were doing awesome work.
Couldn't get away.
Yeah.
Of course, I'm very impressed with Sherwood and how the look of the classroom has changed. But also went to some other schools in existing buildings where the teachers have created separate spaces just on their own, a quiet space, a place for group work, et cetera, and they have done the decor, the way they have created the kind of awnings for the, for the lights that create a beautiful blue and green environment that makes it comfortable, how they have, how they have gone about within a standard classroom and made that differentiation, spaces there available for the students. I was really impressed. And the libraries.
Yes.
Maker spaces, green rooms, all kinds of things going on.
Anything we can do to increase engagement, relevance for kids?
They still have books.
They do. Several of them, I've seen them.
Lots of books.
Yes.
I have a thank you to the custodial staff of the district. For those of us who pay attention to law changes, every August 28th, you pay attention to see what's coming. And in case there's anyone who doesn't know it, I have a strong interest in prevention of child abuse and neglect. And this year, there was a significant change that required that the districts in the state place posters, child-friendly posters that allow children to intervene for themselves if they feel that they are in a dangerous situation. And the custodial staff of the district, I confirmed this with Mr. McKenna, they are the ones who went in and made sure that we were compliant with the new law, but it's, it's more than being compliant. It's very child-friendly to make sure we're on top of that. So I wanted to thank them for that effort because we have posters in all the boys and girls bathrooms in the district.
A lot of restrooms.
A lot of restrooms. I did not personally know that, but I was able to think about it. That's a lot of work that they did and I commend them for it.
So two things. I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Dawson and Marty Moore to talk about curriculum and, and that's something that has been near and dear to my heart since I've been in Springfield. And it was really exciting to see some of the new ways that they're going to go about, including relevant history about every group that has been a part of the creation of the United States and, and some things that they've piloted to look at what's working and other things that they want to do. And so that was just real exciting to meet with them, to see what their plans are and how that's going to fold into everything. The other opportunity that I had on September 3rd with Good Morning Springfield, they had a, they allowed us to present on Lumina and it was, first of all, I want to thank those of you who attended, but most importantly, one of the young men who spoke, Sequoy Hodges, was a product of Springfield Public Schools from kindergarten all the way through, second year at Missouri State University, and he's also the president of the Brother to Brother program. And talk about someone who made you proud. I had so many people from the community that came up and spoke about, it's so good to hear from the students who we keep talking about, can we help or how are we helping them? And so hats off to the teachers for what they go through. And this is a young man who will tell anyone, there was so much he had to do on his own. But if it wasn't for the support he had from his teachers while he was in school and then being in college and then the support of the administration and then even the board, it was just powerful to see how, when we take that personal attention, how we can turn someone's whole life around. And so that's what Lumina is doing, is helping to do. It's not that you guys weren't already doing it, they're just giving additional resources so that we can fine tune it and help those that need the help most. So it was good that the chamber allowed us to take advantage of that opportunity and I thank you all for coming out and supporting that.
Sharp young man.
Hey, Tim?
Yeah, just real briefly, I want to get it out there. I think most of the board is aware that there's been some early discussions on bringing back a facility master plan effort. And Jill and I participated in a meeting last week, it really packed 65-minute meeting with, with administration and that, we met with Scott Wendt and Mike Dawson and Carol Embry and John was able to be in there for a few minutes off and on. I think, I think what you're going to be seeing is, a lot of the discussion was about what do we truly need to see in a facilities master plan and let's be real careful about not asking for consultants to do things that we really don't need, but make sure that the things that we do need from consultants are included in the, in the requests for, for them. I got a real sense that administration is, is moving on this, that this, this is not something where we're going to meet and it's going to just kind of be a dud. I don't know about you Jill, but I was like, oh, this, this is for real.
You, you're an expert. I was barely keeping up.
But the thing that I, I, as, as, as somebody who consults on these kind of things, I was really pleased to see the makeup of the committee because it's really about high-level, big strategies. And for our chief learning officer to be on a committee that on the face of it might just be bricks and mortar, I think is really interesting because we're, we're looking at facilities in a strategic way to enhance learning. And, and so I, I feel like we're, we're on the right path and I just wanted you all to know that.
Thank you. Excellent. Well, let's move on to our upcoming meetings. We have, coming up October 4th through 6th, the Missouri School Board Association Fall Conference. And for those of you, that's a professional learning opportunity for the board. So there we go to Mike of the Ozarks and we have sessions that each of us select to attend to help us with our learning and the role that we play on the board. I'll be going on Thursday for a special meeting on, for board presidents. Hopefully I'll come back a better board president, that's my plan. And then the rest of you will be coming up Friday and Saturday for additional meetings. So that's, it's an important time for us. We have to continue to learn just like we expect administration and our teachers and our students. So that's our professional learning time. Then our next board meeting is October 6th and that will be a retreat and a study session. And this is going to be a great experience because we are going to meet for the first time in a remote, I say remote, it's not that remote. Another location, not here.
Not in Craft.
We're going to meet at the Sherwood, Sherwood Elementary Media Center.
Library.
Library. There is a library in Sherwood and we are going to be meeting there. And that is on October 6th and we will have a, we'll have our study session from 4:30 to 5:15. Correct me, am I right? And then we will have our retreat from 5:30 to 8 o'clock. So one thing I ask the board is to please send retreat topics for discussion to your board officers as soon as possible. We will be meeting, is that tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Oh, well then you have less than 24 hours to send those topics to us. So we're meeting tomorrow.
Several have already submitted, but.
We have some. Some of you I've already talked to and I, and we have a list. So we'll be having a planning meeting for our retreat. We'll plan, planning meeting tomorrow and then we'll have a retreat.
My topic is, it needs to be warmer than 60 degrees. That's my topic. I want some action.
Well, we need to have a retreat on that.
I'm freezing.
And any other upcoming meetings that, between now and our October 6th meeting that I missed? We have so much going on, there's so many activities and events. If you want to go to anything or do anything, just hit our activities and events calendar on our website and you can go to something every day and every night, something fun. So, okay, anything else? All right, moving on to our plus delta. Last week, we had a plus. Last week, we had a plus for our, I mean, at our last meeting, our study session, about our little speed activity where we, as a board, as, since Jerry's not here, I will say it for him, where we were drinking through a fire hose. That's what Jerry usually says about the information that came to us, but it was a, it was a good way to get a lot of information very quickly. So that was our plus from last, from our study session. So please take a minute if you had some things, some things tonight that really worked that you need to continue to do, or some things that may be not working temperature-wise, I guess, that might go on that.
I think that needs to be a, a delta.
Well, I usually don't write them, but I am trying to see what.
68.
Yeah, that's too cold.
Okay. Then we'll move on to 15, executive session, and at this time, the board will meet in executive session following this meeting to discuss real estate and personnel matters as provided in sections 610.021, 2, 3, and 13. So do I have a motion that the board meet in executive session?
So moved.
Thank you. Francine Pratt, do I have a second?
Second.
Bruce Renner, and second, so we'll vote at this time?
Can I have a stay?
No.
If you do, you have to stay out here in the 68 degrees. I'm going in the 72.
I think we, there we go. Most curious. And at this time, we will adjourn our meeting. Thank you for coming.